All right, I'd like to call the Fraser Board of Trustees meeting to order at six oh one. Could I have a roll call, please?
Katie Fisher.
Adam Quicklin.
Louis Gregory.
Katie Souls.
And Brian Circa Venick. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Check for the decision. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda. To approve agenda which includes minutes for October sixteen twenty twenty four. Resolution twenty eleven oh seven GIS contract with NWCCOG Northwest Cog. Resolution twenty twenty four eleven oh eight Frasier Valley Metropolitan Recreation District Lease Agreement. Resolution twenty twenty four eleven oh nine. License Agreement Resolution. Resolution twenty twenty four eleven eleven extension hours Phase One Clayton Court Infrastructure Project and Resolution twenty twenty four eleven twenty two. Rising applications for St. Louis Landing and Early Childhood Education Center.
I think.
Hi Clark. Development Agreement at time.
Hey Louis, can you hear me?
Anybody under that project, definitely not this board. And being the business that I'm in, I can look at these numbers and understand completely what's going on with MAD. It is truly MAD. And I don't believe it's in the interest of the citizens of the town of Fraser for you guys to proceed with that development agreement the way it's drafted. I'd like to after it. It's not drafted well, it's certainly not in favor of the town. And it presents a lot of pitfalls potentially for the town. So I think there should be workshops. We had workshops, they've all been pretty picture workshops. I think there should be workshops that discuss the financials of this project, the construction costs of this project. How it's getting funded, the subsidies by the town, what happens if it doesn't lease up, what happens if the subsidies don't cover the shortfalls? And who's going to cover that? And then what's the town's plan for that? Are we on the hook for more? I just think generally this is not well thought out. And I think it can be way. I want to see, we want to see housing, you guys know that, I'm committed to building housing. And we're building housing only, I build it privately without grants for substantially less money than is what in the budgets that I've seen. And that makes no sense. So we want to see projects like this proceed, but we want to see them done successfully. And when I'm done successfully for the town, and we don't want to see the kind of risk and exposure that is in the agreement that's now in this agenda. That I had the ability to just skim briefly. So I mean, very concerning. And I think everybody should be very sensitive and should get a better understanding of the financials of that project and how it all works. Before anything proceeds forward, like as an example, I think they've sandbagged the budget and you've got a fifty percent of savings to the developer. Okay, they sandbagged the budget, they saved two hundred bucks a square foot, they put a hundred bucks a square foot in their pocket under that agreement. Okay, I'm just telling you their budget with where we built mill apartments is public record, two ninety eight a square foot, including the land and infrastructure, no grants. Okay, those are real costs, nice project. I don't know what this one looks like yet, but I really think you need to be sensitive and cognizant. I'm opposed to you guys approving that project for this, that contract tonight. And I would encourage you to seek out more advice maybe from the local development community as to how the project fulfilled maybe for the community in a lesser expensive way with fewer subsidies. And less risks. Thank you.
Thank you.
For now, Quinn, Town of Fraser, a couple of quick things. One, I think two gave us to review once in October and once in November on a twenty million dollar budget, I think. Two hours is a little light on time for people to look at it and give their opinion. Number two, going through the packet, the rent you guys spelled on the packet, twenty one hundred for a one bed and twenty five forty to twenty five ninety for a two bedroom. Is about, I don't know, somewhere between five hundred to there was five percent open August, and we've seen rents coming down, so. It's not affordable to your work. If they made twenty five dollars an hour and worked full. So just when you guys are looking at your plan, you might want to consider the rent. So I brought that up a couple of years ago at the last meeting.
Thank you. Anyone online? Looks like Kevin has a stand up.
Hey guys, can everyone hear me? Hello?
Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
Just a heads up, the Town of Fraser bandwidth network is low, so everyone online is having a lot of trouble hearing. But I'm going to try and get through what I have to say. Kevin Rifkin, Town of Fraser, I wanted to quickly spend three minutes talking about the packet that I saw and mainly the development agreement with MAD. The biggest issue is the agreement and going through it. And we had our legal team just take a quick look. There's a few sections I really want to call out. One is the housing restriction section in there. It mentions affordable and low income or in moderate income housing, neither of which are defined terms. It defines later that they're going to be governed by the grants that are acquired. The grants go up to one forty. A one bedroom at one forty, or excuse me, a one bedroom at one twenty is twenty three hundred a month. In the last presentation I saw, there's thirty five one bedrooms, which is about twenty seven percent of the total project. Hey, everyone, can you hear me now? Town of Fraser, you're on mute, just a heads up. Ah, now I can hear you. So I don't know where I was, but going down. The, one of the big issues in the contract, if you, and if you look at the last report, is the thirty five one bedrooms that they're trying to build at a hundred to a hundred twenty percent AMI. Are twenty one hundred a month on average, and that's twenty seven percent of the deal. If you strip out Lytec, that's almost forty two percent of the deal. That's above market rate from what we're getting for ones. For anyone's getting for ones. Going down in the agreement, project management costs. In addition to the developer fee, the developer's making seventy five thousand a month. Project managing, and I get that there should be some expense there. The way that language is written is they can start billing that very soon. And there's really no time limit on the end of billing that. I mean, two years of construction, that adds another one point eight million dollars. On top of the developer fee, all of a sudden, the developer fee is ten, eleven percent of total cost, that's asinine for this industry. I think I heard Clark mention before you guys broke up, there's a section that the party should share equally in cost savings. I've never seen that on a group that's acting as fee developer, that they're sharing fifty fifty. The town should be prepped on their money and get money back. If the developer goes and saves five million dollars, the developer shouldn't make two point five million dollars. They should make a little bit of money for saving, but the town should be the benefit and the taxpayers should be the benefit. Going down, section six B, there's a typo that's pretty blatant, that puts more risk on the town. And then even the town development contributions keep mentioning two point nine million. And in a footnote, it leaves out the seven hundred sixty thousand the town's already paid. And that's just, I have a list of about forty things on the contract and our lawyers do as well. That just feel rushed or not thought out. And so really what I wanted, my ask for the town, for the board, for staff, for everyone, is three things. Now that the assumptions are baked, can we have the developer present and present everything at once? We've been kind of going off different assumptions. It's been changing. And the last I saw, I think it was May or June on a presentation that didn't have the full picture. I would ask that MAD or whoever shares the pro forma. The pro forma should be public knowledge, taxpayers are investors on this deal. I want to see how the numbers work and what the assumptions are on their end. And when I say pro forma, I mean the full pro forma, not just a snippet that thinks we're going to exit at a five cap forty years from now. And last, I would ask that the town places a deed restriction on the actual property. That's important. If that goes back to the bank, if it goes to someone else, I want to see this be true affordable housing. I don't want to have this kind of fugazi deed restriction or affordable lowercase a goes away.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Anyone else online? All right. Like I said, I appreciate everyone's comments. Decision does tonight, but we are having executive session about this and then a potential decision afterwards, so. Moving on to public hearing and possible action, but I have a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing for the twenty twenty five budget.
Well, second that, but isn't it for all these resolutions too? Or is it just a budget?
They're all budget related.
Okay.
Yes, all of the items under that public hearing are the budget hearing resolutions.
Okay, I'll second.
And further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, any opposed? All right, we are in public hearing and we'll start with letter A, twenty twenty five budget hearing, Lori.
Share on.
Hey. Good evening, Mayor and trustees. It's with greater and somewhat relief that I'm presenting you your budget this evening, or the town budget, excuse me. This is the twenty twenty five annual budget. This will outline all the operations and expenditures for the year twenty twenty five. And this budget does reflect the conservative fiscal policies of the town. So, starting with we have anticipated major progress for completion of the projects that are listed in the Town of Fraser budget message. And these are, the board identified these as priorities. The affordable housing, Clayton Court infrastructure improvements, downtown development authority initiative. New public works facility, design and engineering, bike playground, town hall improvements for snow shedding and the ADA ramp in the public bathrooms. Sidewalks for Norgren Road and Eisenhower Drive. The comprehensive plan update, which this project is anticipated summer of twenty twenty five to be completed. And this was to help the town's approach to growth, future development, traffic, parking, and potential annexation. This plan will also provide significant updates to town's three mile plan, which have not been updated in about fifteen years. So starting, oh, and the historic church reservations. So starting the revenues, tax revenue this year. I do have actuals up on the screen. Right at this time, but this does not reflect the recent taxes that I received for the revenue that I just received in October, so this is a little bit behind, but I do anticipate that the year end estimate for the town sales taxes will be about four million three hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars, so we should surpass the budgeted amount for twenty twenty four. So I'm confident that four million three hundred and five thousand is a good goal to set for the town to achieve. So going on down through the revenues, we are anticipating total revenues of eighteen million, six hundred and five thousand and two hundred and thirty three dollars. Again, the new revenues are just all of the taxes and all the incoming. We do have, and we're showing the state that we have sufficient funds that will be able to cover expenditures through possible transfers from some of the other existing funds, unassigned fund balance and things like that. I was asked this question a little bit earlier. Ten four one eight six five is St. Louis Landing. And it is separated out. We're anticipating two million, five hundred thousand dollars in expenditures for twenty twenty five. There have been no significant changes to this budget since our last workshop. So I am anticipating that when all is said and done as soon as I get down there. We will achieve our goals, which will be, a little faster, a little faster, come back, come back, come back. Sorry, operator error. Oops, then I go too far. Still not the best at doing this. There we go. So total revenues, eighteen million, six hundred and five thousand, two hundred and thirty three. That's a split between new revenues. And we are looking at expenditure totals of sixteen million sixteen million, two hundred and eighty three thousand, five hundred and sixty four. Which would leave the town in a good fiscal position with a general fund revenue over expended of two million, three hundred and twenty one thousand and six hundred and sixty nine dollars. Which the town is consistently through policies and things in place, has managed to do that year after year, so that's excellent. The remaining funds restricted revenue. I, we did discuss prior to the federal reducing interest rates, so the funds that are in your per month, but I'm still amounts are in there is reducing. So taxes are looking and depending on you staying steady. I think I'm seeing that we're going to do pretty well. And we'll move on from there. Any questions about revenues and expenditures? I did want to talk just for a second about staffing. The town is currently fully staffed plus one position for the new assistant town planner. Which has been, you know, approved by the board. So we're at approved staffing levels. I don't see any increases coming. So we did adjust the total payroll costs. Total payroll costs are budgeted this year for two million, four hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. This does include, you know, this does represent an increase of about ten point five percent. But that's also includes the cost of living adjustments and merit based adjustments for employee retention. So everything, all things considered, that's the payroll amount.
Can you remind me what that twenty five thousand dollar incentive is?
Oh, the, the bonuses?
Yeah.
Annual bonuses based on years of service.
That amount is split up?
That are split between all the departments per employee. That is again, a very nice incentive to continue for employee retention. So yeah, no, this, the, since we have used all of the COVID funds, there are no more hiring bonuses unless the town chooses to prove that. So these have been the annual rewards for all of our employees.
I have a question real quick. So, and I don't know if I was maybe gone, if we discussed this before, but baseline is completely out of the picture, correct? As far as a town as planning goes, since we have a
They're, they're phasing.
We're not seeing baseline anymore.
They're phasing out right now. Every, I haven't updated with Garrett. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm with you. I have, I sit out with Garrett every other week and, and the one thing on our checklist every week is what is a handoff right now with baseline? So with Alan, with Alan ramping up right now, I think the latest happens, and it's just for a certain sliver of things. Garrett's already taken over a significant amount of their role. But it's really, Alyssa was one of the planners of baseline and Garrett, Alan is really looking to replace Alyssa entirely. So we're looking at, yeah, getting that completely handed over internally. It's just a process for I'm hoping very soon. I would hope for by the end of the year. I would hope for by the end of the year. Yeah, that's just a process.
I just didn't know if you had talked about it already or something, I missed it, so, okay, just curious.
No, good question.
Good question.
Okay.
And also we do have the intergovernmental agreements accounted for. That's the public safety and services, that's the Winter Park Police Department. Building Department. Transportation agreement, that one did increase, we've discussed that prior in workshops. But there was an increase for more drivers and additional shuttles specifically for Fraser. You, the agreement that was agreed upon is going to increase some shuttles, black line and purple.
Just black.
Black, yeah, so they'll have a little bit more during peak operational hours, so morning and evening. Any question about the fund accounting? We have the general fund, restricted reserve, capital asset fund, conservation trust fund. That's the lottery proceeds. Cosens Ranch. So anybody need any clarification on our funds? Cause let's see. Other than that.
And all the, all the primary capital projects are listed on page three of the budget message.
Yes.
Nice job on the budget messages.
Thank you.
Very well done.
I'm sorry, where are you on this document?
Well, I don't get to have both of them up at the same time. The budget message was in your packet.
You're looking for the budget messages?
Budget message PDF.
Oh, that.
Which is a more detailed outline. This is presented by Michael.
She's got the Town of Fraser proposed budget up on the screen, but the budget message is in the packet. So first year where our primary source of funds is actually grants. It's pretty interesting. With our sales tax and property tax, it's actually, the anticipated revenues for twenty twenty five are projected just under what we actually have for our grants. So we hope to be getting a lot of reimbursement next year for grants, thus why So we hope to be getting a lot of reimbursement next year for grants. Thus why the, the budget is much higher this year than previous years. Cause we have about six point five million in grants that we're looking to get reimbursed for next year.
Yeah. I mean, I noticed the line item, the ten thirty three, one hundred. The budget was two point four million and we came in at less than four hundred thousand.
It's back up ten thirty three. Yeah, you were on it. Right there.
Ten thirty three. Grants. That's all total grants.
You're talking about the two thousand and twenty four budget, Lois?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the majority of those were not expended. Where now, now that they're moving dirt on Clayton Court.
That's, this is revenue, not expenditures.
Yeah, that's ten thirty three, one hundred is up in revenue. And those were, uh, there was a Clayton Court. There's one point five infrastructure and more anticipated grants for two thousand and twenty four. A lot of those projects are not completed. So in the six million, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty five, those funds have been moved forward and then additional grants, um, thanks to uh, some diligent work by Sarah Katanz, right? Are, are expected and, um, have been awarded. Matter of fact, we have started using the Main Street Live Grant. Uh, we just submitted, uh, a reimbursement to them. And we're working through, it's a process because I sometimes miss something and then the state has to tell me to fix it. And we're expecting a reimbursement on the, um, planning portion of the Main Street Live Grant, which is for Clayton's Court. So that's been the Merrick and, uh, uh, design and planning portion of that. So basically a good portion of that two point four million went forward into two thousand and twenty five.
Okay. That'd be nice to kind of break that out and know how much you're carrying forward and how much we're expected to get next year.
Okay.
The, the total of, you've mentioned eighteen million. Are you adding? I don't see a total there between the new revenue and the total revenue. The general fund total revenue, does that include the new revenue or not?
That does, uh, the eighteen million includes the new revenue. The older revenue is going to be potential transfers from the general fund reserves.
So did you total those, but seven million and change and ten million? Is that where you're getting the eighteen million from? Where's the eighteen million you're talking about?
If you go down to, I don't have a page number on it, but I'm, if you look up at the screen.
Hard to see.
The one that's highlighted eighteen million, six hundred and five thousand. General fund revenues total.
Is that?
That's total, that's new and transfers.
Is that twenty five or twenty four?
That's twenty five. And that's including the grants.
Who on the board reviewed this with you? Was it Adam and Peggy and?
Peggy and Julie?
Neither one of them are here.
No.
Great.
How many times did you meet with, with Peggy and Julie, Lori?
Twice.
Do they have questions?
Yeah, we answered them, but some of the questions were more historical type questions. I think Julie was fairly new to it. They were more concerned about some of the properties, like the Mountain Man Park and, uh, the updates being done there with the electrical and everything that, um, and she was concerned about the buildings being torn down.
More buildings.
We're researching whether the, um, historical association has interest in the buildings over at the Mountain Man Park over by rendezvous.
Yeah.
So nothing's going to happen now. It's
We'll, we'll bring that to the board. It'll be a board decision as far as what you want to do. Do you want to keep those buildings or give them over to the Grand County Historical Association?
So the sales tax of four million, three hundred and five, that's basically that's about a three, five, did I put a five percent? Yeah, five percent increase. Hopeful. I'm optimistic. Grants. Pay as you throw has been doing quite well. It's been very busy actually right now. Um, I'm anticipating about sixty five thousand dollars coming in from that by the end of the year. And the interest earnings. As I mentioned, interest earnings are going to decrease this year due to the reduction in the Federal Reserve. So your new revenues are all of the taxes, license and permits, grants, charges for services, and the miscellaneous revenues. Those are new revenues. And then with the addition of the five million, six, that's where we come up with the eighteen million, six hundred and five.
Again, a lot of this is carry forward from last year, primarily for capital projects that were never, um, they're getting off the ground now. Um, they've had a lot of bids and RFPs now and, um, some work may be done this year for certain projects, but a lot of it's going to be going to the spring next year for actual breaking ground and getting them in the getting them done.
I'm just a little disappointed. I haven't had time to dig into this and ask questions, but the two board members that were responsible for doing this aren't here. So I feel like we're flying a little blind. At least I do.
I know.
This is the third
Since the last one, since our last
When we did, you were here for the workshop, weren't you? It hasn't changed since then.
And you have the ability, just like anyone in the public does, to ask questions about this.
But the two board members that were assigned to work with our aren't here.
Well, it's in the way, huh?
If they had comments about it, they would have let us know.
Okay.
Any more questions regarding the budget here? Lori, did you have any other things to present?
No, we've gone, um, well, you know, the, don't forget, we did do the inclusion of the DDA, which is, uh, its own separate fund. It's a, it's about, it's an enterprise fund. It's a standalone. That's down, there it is, Downtown Development Authority. Um, I think those numbers were the same because Sarah and I had prepared those numbers before the last workshop. And as I mentioned, nothing's changed uh, on the budget. If any significant change could possibly happen, it could be the January certification of the property taxes. But that's usually a minor adjustment. I'm, I'm budgeted a little bit confidently in what the property taxes were assessed in August. I don't think we're going to see any major changes there. And if anything, um, major could possibly come up, um, obviously we'll bring it to the board. So you guys will be fully informed about it. All right. So I'm not anticipating other than those amazing things that can happen on occasion, maybe a water line or something needing some serious attention. Um, although the water fund is sufficiently funded to handle most of them.
Great.
So is this the point where you open a, to public comment on that item on the agenda?
So we can do this one of two ways. We can open a public comment on each of these items, or we could have Lori run through all of them. We could approve all of them at once.
But we don't, not until after we close the public hearing.
Right. Well, this, there would, there would need to be public comment.
Right.
At the end of public hearing. It's just whether we do it for each one of these, or if we want to just have Lori present and then people can get up.
I would have her present all the way through. Comments.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So Lori, keep going. Public, take notes.
Okay. Resolution two thousand and twenty four, eleven dash twelve. A resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding and lease with Headwater, Headwaters Trails Alliance. This is the standard lease that we have agreed with, uh, the Headwaters Trail. This is annually. We've updated, uh, the dates. This is for the maintenance of trails during the winter. They do the, um, packing for the cross-country trail usage over in, um, uh, Cozens Ranch and the area over there. They also provide some, uh, snow, uh, packing and removal for, uh, fire and ice. They also maintain, uh, the center. Uh, they do, uh, staff, it is staffed and they do, uh, greet guests and tell them, you know, hand out maps and give them information. There's also the restrooms over at that building that they keep an eye on.
Do you know the hours?
I believe it's eight to five. But they're in and out. They are, they are, there's only, yeah, and that's in the agreement. There, there's only two people. So yeah, they can be in and out just a little bit.
For two people.
What's that?
A lot of space for two people to be in and out of.
Well, it's not just it's not just the two of them. They have all their staff that does the trail work. You've seen all the vehicles there. I've been there before and they've had their workers in there and there's like a half a dozen people or more. So it's not just the two office staff. It's also the people that they have in the field working.
Okay.
What's that?
I said, okay. It just seems like
Yeah, it's not just, just the two of them. I mean, there's, there's the two that are in there, maybe hold, that spend more time in there, but they have a lot of staff. And, uh, it's actually a relatively small space. We need to think about all the, the work that they do and I don't know where they keep all their tools. I don't think they are.
They have a shed out. No, I volunteer and they, they, they are in and out, but there's a couple of people generally that are there most of the time. But they have a lot of people that are in the field that come in and out of the office.
You know, my only question was we had, um, actually with the Grand Foundation talking about our tracking our in-kind donations. And I think the amount that we have down there for rent is probably low. I, I'm not pulling it up because my laptop's running slow, but we, what's that value that we have in there in that MOU?
Fifteen thousand.
So, but it's so was how much a month like?
It's, 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 um, it's valued at fifteen thousand a year.
Fifteen thousand a year.
But the, uh, the lease that we provide is a zero dollar lease for the HCA.
Okay. We should be tracking.
So
Yeah. Now we've gotten good input to, to provide that as a, a revenue and expenditure in the budget. And it's a good thing. We just already have the, the budget crafted at that point.
Yeah.
But I, I agree.
So
Something we can include in the next budget.
Yeah.
I think so. I think it needs to be maybe based on two thousand a month.
Yeah.
And again, that just helps us track our in-kind contribution.
It's transparency.
What's that?
It's transparency.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a lot. But that was the only thing, that was my only issue.
Okay.
No, that, that was that was a, a great meeting with the Grand Foundation and, uh, yeah, there's, there's several in kind that I'm now aware of. Unfortunately, I wasn't aware of sooner.
Yeah, that we can start tracking.
Yeah.
So we're gonna wait, what is it going to be now instead of the, what would be the rent, the yearly rents? Julie it's going to be higher than that, right?
I can't understand you.
So
The yearly rent would be higher if it's nothing anyways, correct? Like the value?
Uh, right, but it's just accounting for it in our budget. As the transparency part of the contribution that we make to the HCA is that we don't charge them a lease for the space.
Right.
So it's really just kind of putting in our, our revenues and expenditures, just as acknowledging that. And it could be under a category of, um, grants to other agencies or something like that.
But we're going to raise, we're going to put it in there.
Just a valuation increase.
Probably starting next year in two thousand and twenty five.
So there's a, I think, I think what, what
Katie was at the same meeting. Are you still thinking about what we were told there?
Yeah.
Yeah. So probably
So still keep looking to keep the rent at no cost, but the valuation of the lease
Right.
Would increase.
Okay.
Cause I think two thousand, two thousand, a lot is very reasonable.
Yeah.
Right.
Got you.
Sure. All same page.
Yeah. Especially if they're looking at a one bedroom.
And the studio at the
Okay. All right. Okay. Next resolution is approving the two thousand and twenty five building department budget. This is resolution two, two thousand and twenty four, eleven thirteen. And we have, um, established a joint Winter Park Frazier Building Department by intergovernmental agreement. And this was back on December twentieth, two thousand and six. So this resolution will see, uh, that permit revenue, investment earnings, add back revenue, total expenditures. The Frazier, um, distribution for two thousand and twenty five is estimated at fifty nine thousand, one hundred and eighty three dollars. Building. Then Town of Frazier Resolution, two thousand and twenty four, eleven fourteen. Approving the two thousand and twenty five law enforcement budget. The Town of Frazier and Winter Park established a joint Frazier, Winter Park Police Department. This began on September twentieth, two thousand and six. Police chief has submitted their budget. And the proposed amount total for two thousand and twenty five. This includes the police vehicle is down under capital, um, purchases for the Town of Frazier. So it is separate from the amount carried in the budget. The top line amount, our total allocation at forty two percent is one million, one hundred and ninety thousand, three six dollars for the police service. And then the vehicle is carried down in a different. But total is one million, two hundred and sixty eight thousand, three hundred and sixty six.
What are the staffing levels currently?
For the police department? I think they are close, Chief, not even close.
Never been totally.
We're down three.
Three.
As you know, Frazier always only pays action costs.
Yeah.
Unlike the previous contract. Hate the whole thing when they do staff.
You got it. And how big is, well, in ideal staff, what, what would that be? Nine, 10, 12?
We're budgeted for eleven.
We're budgeted for eleven, which we were at for about a month once.
You got it.
But honestly. You see a lot of departments uh in municipalities our size that have thirteen or fourteen officers. So.
Okay.
Can I mention also the police department does pay for the um responsible agol vendor training that we do offer to all of our liquor licensees um and Frazier and Winter Park also.
It's cool.
Year over year, that's a one point five percent increase from twenty twenty four. We had a large increase from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four with the uh the new split based on call volume. Um, and uh next year, hopefully Chief will know what new lease is gonna look like and how that's gonna impact the budget.
Thanks, Chief.
Sure.
Okay. Good deal. Uh, next resolution, Town of Frazier Resolution number twenty twenty four eleven fifteen. And this is appropriating sums of money to various funds and spending agencies. And the amount and for the purpose is set forth below for the Town of Frazier, Colorado, for the budget year of twenty twenty five. This resolution is the state requirement that basically says the board has seen, understands. That the amounts that are listed on this resolution will be used for those purposes. Um, so. Yeah, following some sums of money and this is your general fund. The eighteen million six hundred and five two hundred and thirty-three is for the general fund. And it lists all the funds, restricted revenue, conservation trust fund, capital equipment replacement, capital asset, Cozens Ranch. Uh, debt service, water fund, wa- wastewater fund and Frazier Housing Authority Fund. All of those funds will be put to use um and. It needs approval by the board. All of those totals are in the budget.
Yep.
Resolution number twenty twenty four eleven sixteen. Summarizing revenues and expenditures for each fund and adopting the budget for the Town of Frazier, Colorado, for the fiscal year twenty twenty five. Now, this one just expands on revenue at the top and then the expenditures, which are all listed in the budget and has have been discussed. Um, that's where the funds will go. And this demonstrates to the state that we are fiscally responsible and transparent to the board and town.
Thank you.
So that actual resolution says, whereas the twenty twenty four final valuation for Frazier is certified by the county assessors. Hundred and twenty-one million nine hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred dollars?
Which one? Oh.
You're on the next one?
No, you're on the next one.
Leaving property.
You're on uh, that is resolution number twenty twenty four eleven seventeen. Levying property tax to help defray the costs of government for Frazier, Colorado for the budget year. This is the tax assessment that was sent by the assessor's office. This is done in August. Uh, at the end of August, I get these. Uh, the next one that still will be for twenty twenty four, it won't come out until January. So we are using these amounts right now. That the final valuation for Frazier certified by the county assessor is a hundred and twenty-one million nine hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred dollars property value. Um, the mill levy of Frazier is five point eight eight six. And then that equates to, when you run through that math. That the Town of Frazier's uh property tax income will be approximately seven hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for twenty twenty five.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, my gosh, and I think that was all of them.
Okay, I'm bored. Do you have further questions about any of those resolutions?
I do not.
Okay. Um, I'd like to open up to the public. Um. I guess I'll give up to three minutes on any of the, any of the resolutions. Um, so if you have specific ones you want to talk about, or if you just want three minutes to talk in general, you can do that.
Arnold Quinn, Town of Frazier. Um. First off, what I noticed in the budget this year, and it's not surprising, but it's really easy to spend other people's money. You are spending not the Town of Frazier's money, but we, the taxpayers' money. Um, when you look at the budget for uh workers, it comes out to be an average of eighty thousand dollars per employee for the town. The median income for an employee in the town that's paying taxes is forty-nine thousand. Um, also, you have a benefit package to them, which I think it's great. Every, I'd love to be able to give that to all of my employees. Uh, I noticed there's an eight weeks, uh eight week with pay. If you have a child, you get eight weeks off with pay. That seems a bit excessive. There's nobody in town that I know that gets that. Um, the other issue I have is I don't think you figured into your budget the vacancy rate on uh St. Louis. What's it called now? The old Victoria Village, it's like X, we'll just keep calling it that. Um, fifteen percent of the two bedrooms, which is the average vacancy rate up here, is three hundred and five thousand a year. Um, you guys spent one point six on that project last year and you have budgeted two point five for this year. Is that including? Vacancies for the future? Just wonder if you're building that up. Um, you guys talked about grants. Those are tax dollars just like anything else. You act like the grants are all free money. They're not. They're money that we, the taxpayers, pay. Um, and the grants and the tax dollars you guys are collecting for uh Victoria Village. Um, that was supposed to be for workforce housing, affordable housing, not market rate. And when I sat on the board, we were very clear about that. I believe your website still says it's affordable housing and affordable housing is supposed to be for people that work in the valley, not having. Great corporate jobs or make a hundred and sixty thousand a year, right? Or run a great business. They're for the people that come in. They work every night. They work during the day. They work on the weekends and they still can't afford it. Um, just on the commercial leads for the uh trails. I believe that building's about two thousand square feet. The average cost for uh a space like that in uh Frazier is twenty-five dollars a square foot. That would put that building closer to four thousand dollars, not two thousand dollars. Um, the other thing that I, maybe I just missed it. I couldn't find it, but the legal expenses for twenty twenty four. Uh, the town had budgeted four hundred and eighty K, but I didn't see the actual expenses. What we spent mainly on uh the one major lawsuit we had this last year. I'd like to know how much money we spent on that because in nineteen eighty and in uh uh nineteen ninety-three. Something we've taught thirty years ago. Thanks.
Just real quick, Clark Lipscomb for the record. Um, it it would have been nice if this spreadsheet was on the. Uh. Different. I've been trying to follow it on my computer, um, because it's hard to follow, but I think um. One big concern that I still have, real village and how represented here in at Louis Crossing. Um, or St. Louis Landing.
Hmm.
Eventually. Um, and and specifically, I mean, I I almost think you need a whole nother tab for that. That's a investment, big project. It's gonna be the biggest investment Frazier's ever made. It's one of the biggest investments you've ever made in anything today. And I I I think we've got some real budget flaws here in terms of recognizing what that's gonna look like. And and just as an example, I'm just looking through this stuff. It looks like to me the developers in this agreement are getting seventy-five thousand a month fee. Is that right, Michael? Seventy-five thousand a month fee?
Not correct.
Okay, well, that's what I'm reading in the agreement.
We can, we're gonna, I can explain that.
Okay, well, maybe it's the this, he needs to explain it. We need to like a spreadsheet at an exact level that the community could have, and and we don't have that. And it. Their percentage fee of cost, it equates if you gather together, it it, the way it's written right now. It equates to almost a team developer fee, a ten million dollar fee, guys. Like, no developer in the industry gets paid, no one, okay? So you you got enough staff now. I honestly think you could be managing this project yourself. Uh, it's not. I don't want to like to mean what I do, but it's really not that hard. It's kind of a common sense business and having really good people working for you. Uh, and I mean, I just think that this is really taking advantage of the town. And I don't think that we have a good, clear understanding. And it should be in this budget as a separate tab with a detailed, very understandable executive level budget. That the community understands. That's all I'm asking for. And I think that's important in any budget when you're gonna spend this kind of money. Just not one line item that's two million, a couple million bucks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else in the audience? Anybody else online?
Not seeing anybody online with their hand.
Okay. I've never seen a motion here.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Any post? Let's do that again.
It'll go fast. We can all take turns thinking about.
Okay. So. Twenty twenty four eleven. Had one. Better one in this. Okay, this. This will be all about, um, all in favor?
Okay.
Okay, you know, we can. All in favor? Any opposed? Um, okay, so we had. A resolution on the table. Um, that hasn't, I don't think it's been seconded. The resolution twenty twenty four eleven. Third apartment. Katie did.
Okay, then I'll say.
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Alright, Katie, do you want to do the slate?
Sure. So, um, just in case we get cut off again, we are going to expedite this. So I'd like to make a motion to approve. Um, in conjunction, resolution twenty twenty four eleven fourteen law enforcement budget. And resolution twenty twenty four eleven dash fifteen appropriating sums of money to various funds and agencies. And resolution twenty twenty four eleven dash sixteen summarizing revenues and expenditures for each fund. Adopting the budget for twenty twenty five. And resolution twenty twenty four eleven seventeen, um, levying property taxes.
No second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, motions carry. Alright. And we will move on to discussion, possible action regarding. Uh, treasurer's report. Laura, you're back on the stand.
You're not going to get to see my pretty slides. Sorry about that. But I will report that. Um, as anticipated with paying off some of those very expensive. Projects. That we did this summer, the striping and all that good stuff. Um, your, uh, hold on, it bounced up. User error. There we go. Um. The general fund reserves are a little bit lower than what you saw last month in October. You're just below twenty one million in general fund reserves. We pulled some out to cover some of those bigger expenditures. Uh, the, the wa- uh, the covering the electrical line and everything over at Cozens Ranch. Striping, all that good stuff. Um. Public Works did have a position open for equip- equipment operator and it was filled with an internal am applicant. Um, our gardener Evelyn Ramo is now Public Works fullest, uh, newest full-time employee. Um, she has just started today and she will begin training. She likes heavy equipment, so we're happy to have her. Uh, trucks are ready for winter. Tires, oh, that was also probably part of some of that expenditure. Tire, winter tires are getting put on. Uh, the salt sand has been brought in and. Those new pedestrian signs are installed. I haven't got to see them flash yet, but I'm really excited. I'm waiting for that one. Then your sales tax. Um. And it's not so much fun. Your sales tax revenue was just below five hundred thousand dollars. My graph doesn't exactly show me the number. It was about four hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, which was a good, uh, again, that's the October. That's the November sales tax revenue, which is the October collection of September. So yes, that's how we go through my world. Uh, the performance was a little bit higher than I had anticipated. I thought it was going to drop more. But the sales tax collected October twenty twenty four is five point two nine percent higher than October twenty twenty three. But overall. Twenty twenty four is still hovering around that two point eight percent lower than twenty twenty three. So we're, we're just hovering in there. We can't quite break out of that little. Lower. We've had a couple of really good months, but we had a few months that weren't so good. I'm hoping November. Will come, you know, come back on us and Thanksgiving will be really good. Um, then we had the short-term tax, the short-term. Rental tax revenue. Um, it was at about not quite, it was about forty eight thousand dollars. Um, for the collection. Um, and that, uh, revenue is, it was ten percent of total revenue. We're normally around sixteen, so it was a drop. Um, but October twenty twenty four. Uh, it dropped by about six point eight five percent over September, but kind of anticipated that because of the slowdown of everybody going back to school. And so, and it was still lower than October of twenty twenty three, so. Kind of disappointing, but sort of not surprising. I was asked to add a slide and I'm really sorry. I'm proud of my new slide for you. I was asked a question about some of the remote sellers. Um, October, October. Revenue, again, that was the. Uh, collection of September. Um. And these are remote sellers. This Amazon, uh, Farmer's Dog was on the list. Somebody's out there buying Farmer's Dog. All of the selling online coming into Frazier was about twenty eight thousand dollars. Um, and, um. If you could see my lovely slides, it kind of shows, you could see a real pattern each year. Christmas is coming, it starts to go up and then it goes. After Christmas sales and then it goes back down and it settles down and then they're steady. And then it starts to go back up and it was starting to come back up for, uh, this time of year, because you know, Christmas shopping. So remote sellers, um, are, uh, six percent of total revenue. Uh, January, like I said, might be after Christmas. And it looks like there may be some early shoppers since October twenty twenty four this year for remote sellers. Is higher than October twenty twenty three by a squidge. So. All in all, things are looking pretty good. Um, as I mentioned, that, you know, once. The, um, we start generating, you know, those sales tax revenues will start coming in. That'll start rebuilding those general fund reserves and we'll be on our way to getting ready for next year.
Okay.
Laurie? Uh, interesting question. Uh, how does that compare to our, um, locally derived sales tax? Uh, I guess excluding Safeway. Are we, I mean, is this? Greater than our?
No, it's, it's.
Even?
It's six percent of the overall.
Yeah.
So that is tiny. The, the rest of the overall is going to be your short-term rentals and local sales tax.
Yeah, would I, that's what I was asking about.
Yeah.
If we're getting twenty eight grand, let's say off of Amazon and others online.
That's twenty.
What are we getting off of our locally based businesses?
Uh, okay, take four hundred and fifty thousand and separate twenty eight thousand.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to take Safeway out and see if, see if, you know, our local business are comparable to our online sales.
Yeah, no, it, because your overall sales tax was about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So take twenty eight thousand off of that and the rest of that is. All the retail restaurants, everybody locally.
Including Safeway. Okay.
Well, you. You have short-term rental. Revenue in there too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just looking at.
Ten percent of the sales tax revenue is short-term rental.
Yeah, ten percent and then six percent is the online and then.
And the rest is local.
The ninety.
Four fifty, it's less than that, but.
Yep.
Great. Thanks, Larry. Any other questions, guys? Okay. Um, okay.
Thank you, Lauren.
Let's move on to resolution twenty twenty four eleven eighteen contract with SNISE, the Fire and Ice Festival.
Do you mind if I just stay over here?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're mic'd, right?
I am. Uh, so the last time we chatted about Fire and Ice, uh, I believe was the recap. Um, at the beginning of twenty twenty four. And I had mentioned that the Public Arts Committee, along with, uh, our staff, were thinking about. Kind of bringing it back to what it originally was. Um, and, um, basically getting rid of the Colorado Snow Sculpting Championship. Um, we decided to do that for multiple reasons. Um, we didn't really feel like it was adding a lot to the event and we. All kind of reminisced about the first year when we had the ice sculpture and it was just a bonfire and it was about getting together with the community. So that's. Kind of what this is. Um. So we chatted with Keith Martin from SNISE. Um, they're pretty well-known in the snow sculpting. Uh, realm, which I don't know if it's a huge group of people or not. But he's worked with larger companies like Bill Resorts, Disney, Toyota. Um, he's built the big snow castle at the top of Keystone. He does the big maze at Copper too. Uh, so we talked to him about potentially partnering, uh, at the beginning of, um, this year. And he said he was more than open to that. So the cost that you're seeing, um, would be him and his team coming in. They would be making the snow, uh, in the mid, mid-December and also packing and sculpting a large. Snow sculpture, um, at Lion's Ponds and that would stay there until the Fire and Ice Festival. We believe that would, um, draw people towards Frazier. Um, if you're skiing at Winter Park Resort and you're looking for something to do, let's go see the big snow sculpture down in Frazier. Um, it's not interactive like the big snow fort or the maze, but we kind of wanted to start small. Um, and, you know, see what, see what would happen.
It's fifty thousand dollars.
I think a giant snow fort is way better.
Well, um, I don't want to like talk about pricing, but that's going to be way, that's going to be a lot more expensive.
Fifty thousand dollars for a sculpture of snow?
I can't hear you, Katie.
Fifty thousand dollars for a snow sculpture?
It, I mean, it's quite a bit larger than what we've had in the past, like those tiny little ones. It's. Twenty by ten by twelve.
Real sculpture for that?
Yeah.
Seriously. I don't know, it seems like.
Your mic's not on.
There you go. Are you on it?
So attached, I have like kind of his breakdown too. Um, so he has staff that he has to pay, equipment rental, that kind of thing, lodging.
Nothing, nothing. That's a lot of money for a snow sculpture. I don't know. What do you guys think?
For something, yeah, it's.
I think that's a lot.
It's going to melt. I mean, I understand it'll be, it'll be big. It might be a draw. The sketch and the plan. Was catchy looking, but.
So just, um, they install the one in Keystone and that stays there year-round and this, this price also includes maintenance too. So they come back in January to, to maintain it.
So there's two invoices in here, one through twenty and one through thirty?
Maybe even a closer edit, maybe I'm missing something.
Not sure that's a good.
Not a good view.
Investment. Or not. I mean, I, I would like to see what type of return. You know?
Give it to Tony, like give him a house.
That we would get from that investment. That's a lot of money.
Yes.
Nobody wants to go there.
The, um. I know people love the Fire and Ice. They love the fireworks and all that and, um. I really enjoyed, they did enjoy the, um, contests, which. What did that cost us to host? But they're not available anymore.
It was about twelve thousand dollars.
Okay.
But as I said, there were multiple reasons why we decided to kind of part ways.
Yeah.
With that organization.
Yeah.
In the previous year? This is the third year, right?
Um, it's going to be the fourth year.
Okay, very nice. How long's the, um, sculpture going to be there?
Until it melts.
Okay, well, it's a baby, maybe three and a half months.
The snow was, yeah, the, the snow sculpture stood up there.
How long are they going to maintain it for? Shut mouth or is there like a?
So I would say after Fire and Ice is when, is kind of when the maintenance start.
Three months, pretty much after that. All of February, March and April.
Those sixteen ice blocks. Uh, what was the size of those ice blocks?
Could be freaking bigger than.
Separate. Remember we talked about like the first year we had that. So that's the, that's in addition to the snow sculpture.
So one is the. The ice sculpture that we light on fire and the other one is.
Is the rendering that you see. That sketch.
Sarah, would we still have the twelve thousand dollar costs to put on the Fire and Ice on top of the fifty?
Yes. Yeah, that, what we're asking is the additional fifty for. The ice sculpture and snow sculpture. Callie, uh, who is the chair of Public Arts Committee and also our part-time event coordinators online. Callie, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I would love to add that. I think that this really would be a huge drop for Frazier. It would be visible from the road. It would give people. A reason to stop. Um, instead of just driving by all the things in Frazier, uh, we've. Put a lot of sculptures into that area, so making all of that more walkable and. Um. Apparent to the people that are, are visiting. Um, obviously Fire and Ice speaks for itself. The, the event has gone incredible. The last couple of years and. I think this would just add a larger, more drawn out draw. For people to come. Um, and like Sarah said, the multiple reasons that we're not working with the other company anymore. Was just a headache. Um. And it, I didn't seem to be as. Um. Like people weren't coming to watch the people doing the snow sculpture. They were just coming to view them. So I think. Yeah, more people would come and see and, and be able to see it from the road.
It's more than the average person makes a year in Frazier by a thousand dollars.
Yeah. And we budgeted seventy five thousand for all of our grant requests this year, right? For local nonprofits. It's.
We've already got it.
It's the icing on the cake.
I love the Fire and Ice, but it's just like, whoa.
Justify it.
Yeah, the return on investment is.
Was, so in the first year, was it, was it twenty thousand dollars for that ice sculpture?
No, no.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm imagining this is way bigger.
Well, I think in that, that twenty twenty five, she also has measurements on the, what would, oh, it would already be there.
Gotcha.
And again, it's equipment rental.
Fifty grand, I'll build one.
Yeah, if you, if you add in fifty grand and a couple bottles of wine, done.
We'll get out there.
Scary, give us ten. I don't know, I think.
Man, I don't know where people are going to spend their money. If they're going to get a Safeway, they may go there, but they're still going to spend money at Safeway and. I don't know what other businesses, it, I, I don't see. How it's going to create economic value to the town in addition to what it's already here in Ja- in February.
Well, it would be built in December.
How much would it cost to get ice skating on?
January, but I, I don't think it's. I just don't see the economic impact of. That being much different than what we already have. I mean, if it was five thousand or ten thousand, sure. Fifty thousand is a lot of money.
Yeah.
What can we do besides this to make? It cheaper? But we, we want to make, still have it be amazing, but I just think that's like bottom of our league.
All a bunch of snow in there, build this little sledding hill.
A sledding hill would put some, a sledding hill.
Banners on it.
More revenue, bring more people to Frazier. What's that?
I said, we already have two sledding hills.
Where?
Where? In Frazier?
That's even.
Yeah, oh, yeah. No, something where people could just bring.
So expensive and that's always broken.
Grab their little desk.
No, no, all the time, but. Just for somebody without that kind of money to do, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think sledding hill. I don't know, I'm not in charge of Fire and Ice.
Well, but you are in charge of the budget or one of seven. Um. So it's sounding like this is too, too pricey.
Okay.
Um.
Something we could provide is to the Public Arts Committee to kind of revisit. Maybe looking how we can change this event.
Maybe looking how we can change this event and maybe bring back some options to the board.
But not for fifty thousand dollars.
Ice reek.
We already put the money into Fire and Ice.
Any additional sources of funding, I guess. It was addressed to Steve. Where's Steve?
Steve's on the committee.
He's on the committee.
So anyway, I think.
Do they have any money? Or is, I don't know, what other sources of revenue?
The Public Arts Committee is just a town committee.
Right, okay.
Raise it for Art Center.
Man, I wish, I, I wish it was cheaper.
I know, I really like, I really like the idea, but it is a lot. Yeah.
We can work within a budget, but it's obviously the less money you spend.
So are they having conversations with the tourism board at the county about this event? You'd be curious if they'd be willing to fund it. Or fund a big chunk of it.
Yeah.
Let's ask the tourism board for fifty grand for the ice.
The thing is not an event, it's a sculpture.
Right.
It's a sculpture for an event.
And the space that we hold our
It's a mar- uh, I mean, it's a marketing tool.
Right.
Cause Fire and Ice will
Yeah, the idea that it would be available for viewing more than just Fire and Ice and just the weekend.
But it's not gonna attract traffic to downtown. Right?
I mean, I think it will, but I don't think, I don't think it'll return fifty thousand dollars worth of sales tax.
No, I mean, I, I would have a two to one threshold for ROI. Certainly not gonna do that.
But what would, what would be cheaper in this school?
Well, let them see if they can come up with something else.
Okay, not, not right.
I, I mean, I think the, the um, if we're not gonna do the snow sculpture in December, we still have the ice tower that we had the first year um, and the vendors and stuff like that, which is what we were thinking anyway. We thought the addition of the snow sculpture would be great and um, we definitely have enough money for that in the budget already.
Okay.
To have like the same event we did the first year.
Great. I'm comfortable with that. But yeah, sorry, it's a big picture. It's really fun and high mist sky, but you just don't have that much money.
Cleaner snow number.
And the dichotomy between funding requests for a total of seventy-five thousand and
Okay.
You're not.
It's not a comeback.
No, I respect your decision. I get it.
We can, we can, yeah. We can just have her come back. All right. Uh, Resolution twenty twenty-four eleven nineteen, Open Lands, Rivers and Trails Advisory Committee Appointment. Michael.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
So um, Grand County has a Open Lands, Rivers and Trails Advisory Committee that is funded by a zero point three percent countywide sales tax that was approved in twenty sixteen. Uh, what they do is one of the, the main responsibilities for this advisory committee is to provide recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on how those funds can be spent um, to support things like open lands, rivers, trails, uh, conservation easement initiatives, um, enhancements of uh, different trails, uh, protection of rivers and the banks thereof. Um, it could be related to a variety of different projects that really love to enhance and protect um, open space areas, rivers, trails. Um, and uh, Mira McQuain used to be our representative for the Town of Frazier on the OR.
Maura McKnight.
I'm sorry, Maura? Maura? I haven't said Mira forever. She's never cursed me. Maura? I apologize, Maura, if you're listening. Um, but uh, she's been representing the Town of Frazier for the last eight years and um, she termed out at uh, two four-year terms. So that opened it back up to a recommendation needed from the Town of Frazier. We had one applicant who had the courage to apply for the position and that is your own trustee, Adam Quicklin. And um, we are essentially looking to appoint him to uh, the LRT Advisory Committee. With your approval.
I will say your um, work history could bring a lot of value to this organization. A lot of, to this organization. So I think you're, you're a great fit for it. You going in? Okay.
Um, yeah, I would agree with Katie.
Yeah.
A great person.
A great fit for it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eleven dash nineteen, appointing Adam Quicklin to, what is it called again? OR?
O L R.
O L R T Committee.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
And for the record, I might abstain.
All right, motion carries. Congrats and thank you for
So this was actually an appointment, not just a recommendation.
It's a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners and they, they, they're the ones who have the authority to appoint. All right, so we will, I will relay that to uh, I'll provide that resolution to Anna Drexler who is um, well, she's the Executive Director for the Open Lands, Rivers and Trails.
Okay, moving on to Resolution twenty twenty-four eleven twenty, Town of Frazier approving twenty twenty-five donor advised funding requests. Michael to lead.
All right. Right, everyone. So donor advised funds, uh, this is the same process that we started last year. Um, and what we're looking to do is we had funded for um, for this year seventy-five thousand dollars to go towards supporting nonprofits that provide services. Um, Sir Frazier residents in the arts, in the areas of arts and culture, human and health services, environment, education, amateur sports and uh, other things in alignment with community goals. Um, we did receive um, a total of nineteen requests. Um, and what you have on the resolution is, are the recommended amounts that was uh, determined um, when we met with uh, trustee uh, Souls and trustee Fisher, um, Megal- Megan Ladine and Amy uh, with the Grand Foundation. Uh, myself and Lori just kind of talked through the different applications and where they fell with the uh, what's been identified as the community and the, the board priorities. And uh, with their uh, finances and consideration, uh, different sources of funding that are available um, and the quality of the applications and the quality of the need um, in the applications. So what we have um, here is a list that totals the full seventy-five thousand dollars to be provided uh, to these nonprofit funds and this can absolutely be up for discussion. Uh, we do have uh, Megan Ladine is here if we like any, any questions and Amy's here as well. So uh, happy to open up to questions um, or any, any thoughts. The, the two applications that are not reflected on the resolution uh, was from Sustainable Grand. Um, and Habitat for Humanity for a housing project in Granby. Um, didn't see that as relevant was the consensus of the group and Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, but for the Sustainable Grand request, um, it was very much a discussion about if their need for the funds and if they had, I believe they had other grants that were supporting their initiatives.
So, hi, Amy, Grand Foundation. Uh, with Sustainable Grand, they're a newer organization and I think we wanted to kind of see how the year goes for them. They are getting funding from um, at least one other donor advised fund for their initiatives to just educate the public about rebates and incentives that are available for um, homes, uh, modifications uh, in the sustainability realm. They're gonna be putting on workshops around the community to be kind of a resource for people to connect with funds that are available um, at the state and federal level.
Thank you. So the total request for all nineteen entities was a hundred and ninety-nine thousand sixty dollars. And the amount that's been awarded as budgeted for twenty twenty-four is total seventy-five thousand. And again, that is itemized in the resolution for this agenda item in the packet.
Just curious, uh, there's one organization I'm not familiar with, uh, Center for Independence.
Uh, Northwest Colorado Center for Independence works with um, residents with disabilities. It's a um, multi-county initiative, but we have an independent living coordinator here in Grand County who works with our residents.
You referring to Joy?
Yes.
And Joy Mc- Joy McCoy is on our planning condition as well.
And there's certain stipulations for some of this money too, like must be used for certain things.
Correct. So we have the notes from our meeting and in the memorandums of understanding that the organization sign. We'll make sure we stipulate for Frazier residents only, you know, specific to Cousins Museum. Um, we had sponsorships included in some of the awards, so we'll make sure that's communicated.
Public, it'll be common knowledge for the public to look at and see exactly why we approved and for what reason and then I mean, cause some of it's kind of vague, like it doesn't really say underneath like Frazier residents only. Or Cousins only, you know what I mean? If someone, I guess somebody could call and ask. They had a question, right?
Sure, or we can produce a schedule that gives that information if you guys wanted to put it out there to the public.
You guys think it's important enough? I guess if someone asks.
Sure.
Some of them are gonna be more like vague. Like Rocky Mountain Repertory Theater is in Grand Lake, but it's, it must be seen as a benefit, you know?
For Frazier.
You know, oh, it's grants for Frazier.
It was a Frazier specific or was it the surrounding area?
For which organization?
Uh, uh, I always say the word wrong.
Repertory Theater.
Oh, um, Frazier residents only.
Okay.
And Grand Enterprise Initiative offers confidential business coaching for um, new businesses or, you know, business expansion and that's gonna be earmarked for Frazier businesses.
I, I'm not aware they've ever helped any of this Frazier or started one, so I mean, just, I know that, I know who they are. Should be Frazier, like this guy.
Right, that's why for Frazier businesses.
Correct.
Yeah, but show me what they make.
Okay.
Okay.
So you, you guys administer the, all these funds that are given out and make sure they're being used wisely and for the right purpose. I'd like, it'd be interesting to see of these entities and I'm not familiar with all of them, that how much we're supporting them and how much say Winter Park or other municipalities are supporting them and
We went through that.
And, and
Pretty good.
That was part of the discussion.
Yeah. So this was our um, the second deadline for our donor advised funds we manage for the towns and county. So we had already gone through the process with Winter Park, then met with um, representatives from Frazier and then upcoming we'll be reviewing apps for Grand Lake um, County and Granby. So we didn't have the asks for twenty twenty-five at the time for all of the organizations, but would it be appropriate to share that? I don't
I'm Megan Ladine with the Grand Foundation. Because those budgets aren't approved and we haven't met with those committees, there is no determination of final amounts just like here tonight. So Town of Winter Park hasn't finalized theirs yet, so. I, until we have those.
We shared context um, with the committee for the, the asks that we knew about. And we do request final reports from the organizations that are awarded funding to make sure that the funds were spent in accordance with the grant award.
And one of the benefits um, doing it with the Grand Foundation is because we do know all the different asks and awards between the different uh, donor advised funds, towns, county, what have you, but also what the Grand Foundation funds. And we have many other donor advised funds that are either unsolicited or that these organizations have asked monies for. So when we meet in committee um, with Katie and Katie, sorry, um, and Michael and Lorraine, you know, we bring that stuff up. So we are happy to provide, once these things are all final, all the numbers of what the other towns, you know, the public dollars.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I would just like to see, I'd like, have a little bit more transparency around this. And does some of the entities get uh, public funds or like government funds or county funds or state funds?
Well, sure, they do. You just appointed um, Adam to O L R T. So some of these um, organizations have applied and received O L R T funding. And so that's just as public as well. Uh, as far as governmental funds, you could look at some of these. You just asked about uh, Northwest Colorado Center for Independence. They're a quad county initiative. Over in Route County, they have a tax, a perpetuity tax initiative that goes to that organization. However, those dollars don't translate over to Grand County. So for example, you could answer that question, yes. But maybe not towards the Grand County branch over here.
I was thinking more of like Grand County Search and Rescue. Is that a county entity and what?
They're a standalone entity. They're their own nonprofit. Do they get monies from the county? Yes, they do get monies to help with um, they have some, a line item that's through the Sheriff's Department, I believe. But they can also apply for grants too as a five oh one C three or organization for special projects.
And the Pregnancy Resource Connection?
They are not. But I'm sure that they are not a department of the county or getting funding.
But what are, what are they and what do they do?
So they're offering um, services around pregnancy um, and post, post-birth. They do birthing classes. They have women's specific medical services free to no cost. And what we funded here is um, allowing a nurse practitioner to come up and provide those services on the weekends um, at their site. So a wide range of women-focused health services that no other organization is providing up here.
It's a really valuable asset.
We got a, my wife got an ultrasound there. Instead of having to go to the front range, they're the only ones who can actually offer that service.
Middle Park, Middle Park Health didn't offer that?
I'm not aware.
I, I believe that once a week, Middle Park Health does have an O B G Y N come over to the Granby location once a week. But this, this particular organization, you know, deals with the certain subset of residents that maybe don't have insurance or, you know, you, you have to look at it that way, you know, lower income, I would say, too.
Very valuable service.
Keep those babies healthy.
It's awesome.
Any, any other questions from the board?
Anyone else?
Anyone wanna make a res- uh, a resolution, uh, make a motion for a resolution?
I can't, I was on the committee. I was thinking maybe one of you guys.
Oh, could I?
I'll make a resolution.
Okay.
Or a motion to, a Resolution twenty-four eleven twenty. Um, Town of Frazier approving two thousand twenty-five donor advised fund requests.
Is there a second?
Um, I guess I'll second it and trust you got your judgment and listen.
That was good.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thanks for the work, committee.
Thanks.
Um, okay. Moving on to updates, uh, board updates. At our groundbreaking today, at Saint West Landing. Thanks for all who attended.
Yep.
That's all I have. Michael.
We think the governor attended by helicopter. Totally sure.
Wobbly helicopter.
They're like wave. I'm like, you don't wanna see my waves.
We got projects underway. Um, with the approval of the budget, we'll be preparing the pre-bid documents. With the approval of the budget, we'll be preparing the pre-bid documents for the phase one of the, uh, Community Center Historic Church. Um, be looking to get that out hopefully in January and getting that out to bid.
Right.
So, uh, the goal for all projects planned for next year that are lying, laid out in the budget is to have those bids or RFPs published by February fifteenth and no later than. That's our goal.
Yeah.
That'll help us make sure that we can line up workers to actually do the work within the fiscal year of next year. So we have hopefully less funds rolling year to year and getting a better, getting a better handle on our projects and getting them out and.
Thank you. Yeah, but sooner the better.
Okay, so we are going to be moving into two executive sessions. And then returning to the meeting to potentially make decisions on those. Yeah, um, so we will be rejoining. If you want to hang out on the, what, the YouTube or the Zoom, uh, you're more than welcome to, we'll give a, a few minute warning that we're coming back. And, um. And. We'll go from there. Okay.
I'll say that if anybody wants to hang out there. If you want to hang out in the lobby, you can, or at the parking lot, we'll make sure we have somebody come out and wave at you guys and if you want to come back in for it, you can.
Do you guys have a, like, an idea of how long it might be?
No, we have two executive sessions. Could go fast.
Hopefully.
Yeah. And it does say discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
At least an hour, I would say. Yeah.
Yeah, those are both.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thanks everybody.
We have the executive session, Chief. We have one. Anthony. I know if y'all heard that, but.
Yeah, I guess one last, one last.
This water.
Before you read that, uh, just so, one last thing was we actually. One second, Paul, one last, one last thing is we did, uh, we did get invited to apply for GOCO for the bike park. Uh, which we have not gotten the last two application rounds, so. We've been able to clear up some of the support with CPW and, um, have a much more reasonable ask for the funds for the bike park, so. Yeah, typically when you get invited to apply, about eighty percent of those get approved. So we're, we're hopeful and, um. We will be applying for GOCO funds here very shortly for the bike park. So that's very good, it ends right up, ton of work on that, so she's.
Awesome.
Did a great job with that.
Good work.
Paul, so I'll just say an update on what Lori just said, um, Lucas did get the Water Smart Grant, but this is for twenty twenty-six. So next year in the budget, you'll see the fifty thousand dollar match. For the hundred thousand dollar grant, this will allow us to start phase two of the water meter. And move into, so it's more grant funding to replace those water meters, so. I know, I, the board may see a lot of recommendations for staff to go after Water Smart Grants, but. We focused our Water Smart Grants on the water meters and we've gotten, we've gotten this, we didn't get it last time, but we got it this time, so. But.
Thanks, Chief.
Lucas and, uh, Lucas and Lori put a lot of work in on this and Lucas just took charge of it and. Jumped through all the hoops to get the federal funding, so, but this will be for construction in twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Awesome.
Sounds good.
Okay, I move to enter into two executive sessions. The first executive session for a conference with the land use attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. Under CRS, section twenty-four dash six four oh two four B. For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Developing strategies, strategies for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two. Four E regarding development agreement. Including land use attorney Austin Flanagan, town manager Michael Brack. Public Works Director Paul Johnson. MAD developers Todd Moore and Matt Ginsberg. The second executive session. For discussion of a personnel matter under CRS, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two. F I and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session. Regarding town manager contract, including town manager Michael Brack.
And the first executive session will not be recorded because an attorney will be present and the second will be recorded.
Okay.
Okay. Let's take a couple minute break because we have a second and a second, oh yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? We're back from executive session. We have decided that we do not want to take action on resolution twenty twenty-four eleven twenty-one. And potentially form a subcommittee to help the board, um, dive into this contract a little bit more. So. That is the action we want to take. And regarding the second one, um, did we need to like? Have a decision, your name wasn't on the executive session, so we were like, do we have a conversation with you, do we? We weren't really.
Oh, sorry, um, yeah, you could have called me in when you're. Oh, if you guys want to have a private session.
Didn't have that in front of me, I forgot.
Um. A recommendation I have right now. If you want to allow for a public comment on the item, let them kind of speak their, or anybody else who's online, speak their piece to it.
Oh yeah, for the St. Louis Landing piece?
Yeah, for the development agreement, just to, so we have full, you have full understanding of the concerns and allow for that, um, public comment.
Cool, I like that. All right. Would anybody in the room like to comment? You guys kind of already did, but you can comment some more.
I'm very brief, it's late, I know y'all are tired, but Clark Lipscomb for the record and, uh, thank you, uh, for doing that, I think, um. I, I think there is a really, really. Uh, good, available group of smart, young. Uh, very experienced developers that can help. Our goal is to deliver affordable housing. And I think there's a really, really good group of guys that will help. If you'll let them help, guys and girls, both by the way. Uh, and, and we appreciate you guys doing that and I, I think the overall goal of all of us. Should be to try to deliver an affordable project that's deed restricted. Uh, and, um. And one that hopefully doesn't require the kind of subsidies. That it's currently requiring and I think if we can achieve that, then it's a win-win for everybody and the community wins, that's the end goal. And, and let's all work together and try to make that happen, so thank you all.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Parnell Quinn, my like comment is, uh. The important thing is make sure the rents are right. And, uh, Michael was trying to explain to me just a minute ago when we were outside that, uh, I may have the rent numbers wrong, but from the numbers that we analyzed. Uh, the rent numbers I was projecting are, are what the rents are going to be. To make the project cash flow, so. We either got to figure out how to cut out the costs or workshop with stuff and, um, you know, when I was on the board, I voted for Todd and them to. Uh, be the group because I thought they had the right builders and I watched what they did in Winter Park and it's just shocking to see what they did in Winter Park versus what they're willing to do here. So I've, I would like them to still get the project, I just think that they need to make their numbers tighter and, and there shouldn't be. Such a huge benefit to them if they reduce their numbers. It, it, it should be one percent, maybe two percent. Um, not fifty fifty, so. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else online? All right. All righty.
So Mayor. I probably did a misunderstanding with the executive, um. You, we could, you could go back into executive session. Um, we can have our discussion, then come back out and do, and move on the contract. Or you can, if you, you have the option of moving on the contract and then we can go to the executive session. And get the feedback part kind of thing, if you'd like to. Um, you can do either one of those if you would like to, that way you can kind of cut everybody else loose if you want to. Just throw that there.
I guess we wanted a little clarification, um. The intention with the budget was that every town employee is getting cost of living increase.
Yep.
And then. Based on merit, there's another percentage of people that will get.
Yeah, so what we, what we have for Cola. Cost of living adjustment is three percent. Um, feedback that I received from the board, uh, last year after the pay raises. Was to see the merit increase. Tailored a little more towards maybe a higher merit increase for, uh, non-supervisory positions. And then a, uh. I'm sorry, did I say that wrong, a larger merit increase for non-supervisor positions and a smaller merit increase for these supervisor management positions. Um, so for non-supervisors, we've looked at merit for. Uh, three percent. And then for supervisors and managers, uh, the, a merit increase of two point five percent. So, um. And I, I, I hope that the presentation, the budget wasn't confusing, the ten point five percent increase accounts for the additional assistant town planner position. Salary and benefits. But, um.
So everybody's getting three to six percent, right?
Correct.
Three to five and a half.
Three to six. So non-supervisors, street operators, wastewater operators. Deputy clerks. Um, we're looking at an increase of costs, a, a increased salary adjustment for six percent. And anyone who's a supervisor or manager was looking at a total increase in salary of five point five percent. So a lower amount for the higher salaries and a higher percentage increase for the lower sever, salaries. Um, additionally, we did have the, uh, twenty-five thousand for the, the bonuses that we've done every year. Um, that has gone towards the, uh, the focus for that has been on longevity. Over the last several years and, um. For that, it was a, um, a fifteen hundred dollar cap for, uh. Supervisors and managers. That have seven, it's prorated at seven years with at least two years of experience. And the focus there is while we've had a lot of new people coming on, is trying to retain the people who have been here for years. And for, um. For non-supervisors, that is, it's the same proration, seven years. Uh, as long as they've been with the town at least two and that is a two thousand dollar. So, um, less than half the staff, um. Works for that and the consideration for that again is retention of people who have been here for several years. And a lot of the people that did come on the last couple of years did get a sign-on bonus from the towns being more aggressive to get up to our hundred percent staffing levels.
And we need to make this decision tonight. First of all.
We want to hire you.
We're gonna rehire you.
I know, I know, that's why I said, gave them the option, I gave them the option if you. We can go back into executive session and then come back out if you want to. But for the feedback, I would encourage that in executive session, so again, you can either, we can go, go back into executive session if you'd like to. Um, come back out and make a ruling on the contract or you can. If you guys have agreed to what you would like to see in the contract, or if you want to renew it, you can take action on the contract and then just tell the public that you're not coming back after executive session. Whatever you want to do.
We also have two board members that are missing.
Okay, if you want, we can table it to December fourth.
I feel like that feels more right, just so we have more.
Now with our obligations, so for you and for giving you the rehire. We're, we're good with doing that at the next meeting?
That's fine.
Okay, because we definitely got a heart back.
Okay, that's good to hear.
It's just figuring out what we're going to pay them.
Sure. No, I understand.
And, and feedback.
Well, yep, absolutely.
And that, that, that should be done in executive session.
Yeah, it would be good to have.
And I think, I agree, I think we should have the other board member say.
Right, yep. All right.
Alrighty, so that takes care of everything.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor? Opposed, all right, thanks everyone.
Okay. Closed it at nine thirty-one.
Yep, thanks. Appreciate that.
Oh, goodness gracious.
Yeah, we didn't know what you currently get paid, like, there was a lot of. Be good to like have. What your compensation is like right now.
Yeah, yeah.
We're also like, when did it start, like?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, and the intent was just to come get me to come in while you guys are still in executive session. Have the conversation, so I, I apologize if that was unfair, but.
Yeah, I didn't have the, we didn't have the sheet. And we were like, did it say he could be in this executive session?
Right. Remember, see, I know, it is, it was, it allowed me in the executive session. Were you saying I wasn't listed on it?
We just didn't have a sheet to know.
Yeah, write the, a motion sheet. So I didn't have that for reference.
I thought Anthony gave that to you.
She like, they had one copy of this.
I think she had one copy and she took.
Oh, gotcha.
Alrighty, glad boy, Michael.
Seventy-five thousand dollars. Exactly. Or you take that seventy, whatever that seventy-five thousand a month, whatever that, I'm there and take it away from that. All the feedback.
Brian, do you have, do you have access to bamboo?
To what?
Bamboo.
Uh, yeah.
You can always see all my.
Okay. Next long day.
What a long day.
Yeah. Stay back in the office after five days away.
Well, Brian, remember that the planning was the meeting when we were talking about the hotel?
Yeah.
And I was bringing up my concern about that corner. And I'll type, and Clark said, oh, Scott likes it like that, so. But I was like, well, ask Scott, when I was at the rec center.
Yeah.
Said, I never said that. And the truck comes in one way.
I was gonna say, if you ask Clark again, he'd say the same answer, I never said that.